And you're alive, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, James. Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call the order of the Anna Reynolds School Project Building Committee to regular meeting. It's Thursday, August 5th, 2021. It is 5:15. The first order of business after the roll call is, excuse me, prior to a call to the order is the roll call. Messing them up here. Jeff, if you could do the roll call for us?
I was rushed to signify their presence when the name is called. Counselor Camillo.
Here.
Counselor Minor.
Here.
Mr. Sylvia.
Yes.
President.
Ms. Stam.
Here.
Ms. Dugan.
Here.
Mr. Wetzel.
Here.
Mr. Woods.
Okay, here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that. The next item is public participation. I believe we have some people with us tonight. There's actually two attendees. I don't know if either one of them would like to speak, but if you would, this is your opportunity. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand or dial in. Toll field number is 888-788-0099. James, you don't see anything, right? I don't see any hands going up.
I've got no hands on my side.
Okay, we're gonna move on then. Take action on prior meeting minutes. I believe we have one to do. The meeting of July 15th, which was our last meeting. If someone would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting, so the last meeting.
By Cindy Stam and a second.
Second.
Secondly, Mike Camillo, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Next is architects update. I believe we have Paul, I think is with us from Castle Boost this afternoon.
Thank you, Steve. Jennifer way this week on vacation, so.
Good for Jennifer.
Yeah, good for her. You're right. I have a quick presentation I'd like to share with you. A quick, couple of quick design items, and then I want to update you on a proposed schedule change to advance the schedule a little bit, so I'm gonna share my screen.
Okay.
This one? Share? Okay. Can you see the screen?
We can, Paul.
Great. So we are in the middle of design development now. We finished schematic design and we're exploring building systems, exterior, envelope and materials. So I just want to bring to the committee a couple of ideas forward with, and if you think moving in a general correct direction, we'd like to keep going forward. We didn't spend much time in schematic design at the front entry piece, so this is a site plan. Just to orient everybody, this is the current drop off. This is the notch where the main entry is. We're proposing a small canopy to mark the front entry piece, and that is this trapezoidal shape right here. And we would plan on extending the paving pattern underneath it all the way out to the curb cut. This would be a crosswalk, some bollards out front, and then some benches with some potential lighting and some planting. So it's, it's not, it's not, it's modest, but I think we need to do something at the front entry to market more than it has now and provide some canopy protection from the weather. So this is the concept we're developing. We did a quick sketch of what it might look like. This is the cafeteria and beyond. This starts to get into some of the materials that we're thinking of using on the exterior. The canopy would be this trapezoidal shape. The concept started with recognizing that Anna Reynolds is kind of positioned in off the road, kind of in the woods, and we started to explore this kind of woodsy feel and get some earth tones into the color palette and some natural materials. So what we're proposing is almost a simple column with some branches maybe to resemble a tree structure, some metal panel underneath the canopy with a wood tone to it to warm it up and re-clad the front entry piece, you know, with new windows, with smooth metal panel in this, call it, it's redwood color, and add some texture with other metal panel, sort of a bronze color. We'd also infill the cafeteria with that same palette, and anything that touches grade, we're, we're thinking about using a precast concrete panel, so it's durable. Often when we bring this metal panel system to the ground over time with snow and salt, it rusts and it just doesn't last over time. So this is a snapshot of the palette we're thinking about. We're thinking about the canopy and doing something modest out front, but also adds some protection from the weather. I'm gonna move through these slides and we can go right back to them, if you don't mind, Steve.
Okay, yes, no, go ahead, Paul.
This is, we showed the committee this slide before. This represents, you know, this is what Anna Reynolds has right now. This is a similar project we've done in the past, very same vintage, same issues. This was the solution we came up with. This happens to be here in New Britain. So this was their, their solution on a different project, but again, it's a concrete precast base, new window systems, a metal panel, and the metal panel systems come in different colors, different textures, so we're mixing it up with Anna Reynolds compared to this, but the read we got last time is this was kind of the general direction. It seemed okay, so that's how we, we moved forward a little bit more with that idea. And this, I'm gonna zoom in because this graphic is tough in two dimensions. And you can see some of the textural changes that happens. So take, for instance, this is a classroom. We have the precast concrete at the bottom. Again, it doesn't, metal panel doesn't touch the grade. We have new window systems within the classroom, and we're mixing up the ripped texture for the metal panel and a smooth, and we're also changing the color. So what it does essentially, in short, is break up the long, low academic wings. So this is what we're thinking about using throughout all four sides and on the inside courtyard as a, as a materials palette. So let me add one more thing, and then we can talk about it. In addition to the exterior skin that we've been exploring, is Lou on the call? Lou, are you there?
No, he's not.
Yes, I am. I'm here. I just had unmute for a minute.
Okay, so Lou and I had a good conversation with our mechanical engineer and his mechanical technician earlier this week. This classroom, we're proposing a mechanical system. And we checked in with Lou and his mechanical technician. What it is, is instead of, normally what you do is you have rooftop units with a lot of ductwork in our, in our schools. Anna Reynolds has a roof height that is very low in this vintage building. And, you know, it's very difficult to run ductwork with a low ceiling. So a mechanical engineer came up with an option for a system. In this corner is a little, it's a vertical cabinet. If you can see my cursor, it's right here. It's a vertical VRF unit. They often come in, in ceiling systems, but what it essentially does is it, the benefits of this system is heats and cools within the room, limited ductwork. And it's self-contained within the classroom. There's control per classroom. And we don't have to run ductwork on the roof, which Castle Boost doesn't like to do normally because of, it just doesn't hold up over time usually, and it's, it introduces potential penetrations in the roof. So there's some benefits to this. It also helps with the phasing of the construction and maybe CSG can, or Newfield could weigh in as well, but these systems are essentially self-contained with heating and cooling. And they, they do require a louver on the outside wall for ventilation. We would take that louver and put it midway up the wall, so it's not low at grade. We got some good advice from CSG that that was problematic on a different project. We don't want to introduce moisture low at the ground level. So we think this is a good idea moving forward. We'd like to get kind of your reaction. This concludes kind of the design work that we've done, so we can talk about the exterior or the system. What I'm really looking forward for today is, and Lou, you can jump in please if you, if you want. Sort of, yes, this is worth pursuing because we, we, we want to keep moving forward as quickly as possible, so.
Question.
Really quick, but that's where I am right now.
Question?
Yep, go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. The particular unit that you're displaying in the, and suggesting, does it address viral via UV light sanitation?
That I can check. I wish our mechanical engineer was here tonight. They do have a lot of options.
I mean, heating and cooling and all that, and I appreciate the suggestion, but I think the biggest thing that we're going to be facing into the future will be addressing the potential for viral issues with UV light and things of that nature, whatever is being introduced in. So that's my only concern. And going back to the canopy, I love the canopy idea, Paul.
Great.
Personally, but I had one question of the gap between the canopy and the cafeteria. I know that a lot of the after-school activities utilize the cafeteria and they exit out that particular doorway. And so it, I'm almost wanting to extend the canopy so that that doorway that we see underneath Anna Reynolds signage is actually not, not the main, that door, right, is actually covered also, so that the people that are ingress or egress out of that particular doorway also benefit from the canopy? That gap just shows me they're gonna get rained on or get snow.
What I would, I also have someone from Castle Boost on the phone. It's our, Sang Wan Lee, he's our design director here, but my initial thought, Steve, is that we would probably want to introduce the canopy as its own separate piece for protection over that door. I don't think we want this canopy to touch the side of the gymnasium.
Anything of that nature, that would be fine, Paul, but that's basically the only thought going through my mind is trying to cover that doorway right there where your arrow, where the arrow is.
Okay. Good point.
Mike, you had your hand up to accident, Carol.
What about audible noise in the classroom for that unit?
Great question. We had our acoustical engineer look into it, and the, our acoustic engineer talked to the rep directly with our mechanical engineer. And I was not part of that meeting, but Jennifer was, and is typically a very conservative engineer acoustically. And at the end of the discussion, going back, I guess, there's some back and forth, and he was satisfied that it would meet the requirements. So.
What are the requirements?
I, I would have to dig in. We have a whole submittal from the company. But we have to meet the ANSI standards for any classroom noise. I forget what the NC value is. That's standard, and we do that for all the schools we work in.
Thank you.
Carol?
I was concerned with the noise too, so thank you for answering that question. I was also, I want to make sure I understood correctly. Will each classroom be able to regulate their own heat and air conditioning, or will it be because it's a unit in a classroom, or will this be overall like it is in the other schools?
Yeah, that's my understanding. Every classroom has its own control. And I, I think that's even optional. I can check in with that, but every room controls their own atmosphere and environment. And how I've had it described to me was the air's not moving between classrooms. So that helps potentially with the, you know, the fear of COVID and, and moving air through different spaces. So that's one. Here's the caveat, and just to be upfront, Castle Boost has never used this system before. We reached out to, Jennifer found a school system in Greenwich that has this system installed in nine of their classrooms. She talked to the facilities director, and we're trying to get some correspondence. Lou requested some sort of correspondence saying that it, it meets their expectations and they're generally happy with it. I got that right, Lou?
Yes, I was looking for it from the occupants, where the people who live in the building or these rooms all year round, it may be good in the summer, but it's lousy in the winter, or it's very humid, or very stuffy, whatever it is. So, you know, the visit by us in the middle of summer in unoccupied classrooms would really just indicate that the air conditioning system is working. But I'd rather have some kind of testimonial from occupants to say, you know, this does a good job over the span of the whole year. So that's really what we're looking for. Hey, Paul, is it Dan Watson that you dealt with in Greenwich?
I didn't. Jennifer made all the calls there, so I'm not quite sure. Do you know if someone down there, Jen?
Yeah, we did, we did the New Lebanon School. We know Dan well, and we're still working down there. We're at the high school doing some work. I can reach out to him and get his opinion on it as well.
Right.
Well, Paul, I think it'd be a great idea for you to send a building committee members through Jeff Barron can distribute it, that brochure that you sent to me regarding the unit because it addresses the acoustical values and other things.
Yeah, I, again, when it was brought up to me, the first question I had, which I knew Lou was gonna have is noise, because we have something similar to this. Oh, they're not independent at Martin Kellogg. And they proved to be problematic. Again, it's almost 20 years ago, so there's changes in technology, and this is a little bit different because they are independent unit versus slave units that we have in Martin Kellogg. And I believe Lou has been talking with CSG and Castle Boost, and it looks like they're gonna meet that threshold, but he just wants a little bit more verification on that. And Carol, to your question, they do have independent controls in their each classroom, but the system can override, so there's not a big swing. So while you have a complete control, they might limit to you, say, five degrees one way or the other, or three degrees one way or the other. You know, so somebody doesn't set it at 62 or at 85. But it's, each room is separately, so that's a, that's a plus for it. If they can get the noise to be, you know, at a low level, it's a really beneficial use. In fact, we go down that road with these.
The reason I was asking, because historically at Anna Reynolds, you can walk in one room and it's 85 degrees in the middle of the winter. You can walk in another room right across the hall, and it feels like 60 degrees. So that's why.
Right, correct.
But you're gonna have some of that, just because some of these rooms face north, some of these rooms face south, right? So you're gonna get solar gain on the southern exposure, and you're not gonna have any gain at all on a northern exposure through the winter time. We know the school doesn't really have air conditioning, so there'll be a little bit of a swing, but you'll have independent control. And it should be much better, so you shouldn't have 90 in one room and 75 in another.
Yeah, that, that's my main concern because that, that's difficult when you're going from room to room. So, thank you.
So I just, Steve, I just emailed the, the brochure that talks, that describes the unit to Jeff and asked him to email it to all members.
Okay. And then, Paul, were you done? Because I just have a couple of questions for you if you're through, or do you?
You don't mind. I just want to mention that. We touched on this at some point. Castle Boost wants to advance the schedule a little bit. This basically takes about four or five weeks off from the last schedule you saw. The reason being is we would like this orange block right here. We think it would be beneficial, and we think, we think we can do this, get 90% construction documents over to Newfield right before the holiday break. That orange block represents two weeks over the holidays where historically we don't get much done because we have a lot of consultants and everybody, including us, we disappear. So it just doesn't work. So I'd rather try, try to get it out the door before the holidays than after. And I think we can do this. The caveat is all, all the green lights. If you're traveling to work, going to work, all the green, the lights have to be green. You know, so if we hit some bumps along the road, this may not work, but this is the goal, and I'd like to try and meet it. You know, depending, we get the SD estimate back, and there's a lot more work to do than planned. That may be a little bump, but.
Yeah, yeah, what I like about it, Paul, is that even, even if it doesn't get really moving along at Newfields, it's there. So once everybody's back on the first, you know, you don't lose the whole month of January getting it over to them and getting straightened out. So I think it's a smart move on your part. If you, if you feel you can do it, I think the product benefits from it.
At this point, we do, and we'll just keep you updated if things get in the way. And the, the plan is after the holidays, we'll have about five weeks to pick up anyone's comments. Newfield, the committees, CSGs, get, go through the approval process of getting signatures from the board of end and all that. Get through the state process and, and be done.
Okay. And I don't know if you can answer this question, but back to the, the units and the individual rooms, and really the louvers on that solid panel, do we have any idea on the size? You know, how much is gonna break up that panel? Are these, you know, two by two, one by one, 18 by 18? Do you have any idea the size?
Three foot by three foot is the guidance we got, and we're trying to work out with our mechanical engineer if we can shape them differently instead of a square. Do we have any latitude with, because we can, we can play with the joints, and we, we may actually adjust this pattern so the louvers fall within the rib, the corrugated profile instead of the smooth panel. So we're still, this is still a work in progress, but we just wanted to share this with the committee to see if you generally like what we're showing.
One more question. Is it two louvers for, per panel or one? You know, so one, okay.
One per unit, so it's one per classroom.
Okay.
They cannot be next to each other because they can't share.
They can't share the same fresh air, yeah. They're fighting, okay. Okay. I mean, I, I like the look of what, what you're doing so far. I'm opening up to the, to the committee to comment on, on the looks. I think Mr. Sylvia had a great idea that you get another canopy over that door, so there's at least a little bit of protection coming in and coming out. I understand why you don't want to tie it to the brick, and I think that makes some sense. I do like the look, you know, it's amazing. What you can do with just a few minor changes, it changes the whole look of the interior or exterior of the building. You know, right down to the landscaping, it's, it's, it is, it's clean. It, it's easy for maintenance from what I can see on the outside. You don't have a lot of different textures here on the outside. I like the brick or whatever we're gonna use for the entrance to set it off, so you know where the, the main entrance is. I like the little seat walls there. I think those are great. I definitely like the look so far, what's going, and I mean, colors, that, I'll leave that to the experts. I, I, I like the earth tones, though. I think it looks good. Let's see, let me go to my thing so I can get everybody in order of who raised their hand first. So I have Chris Minor first.
Thanks, Steve. Paul, real quick, on the VRF units, are they utilizing shared condensing? So all you have is just line sets running between the walls and the roof lines?
Yeah, that's my understanding. Remote condensers, I believe we'll put them on the roof. And I think there'll be multiple condensers, multiple units per condenser, so.
Yeah, I think there's, there's two condensers on the roof for each wing.
Okay, yeah, that makes it a lot easier just to put line sets up and ceilings and walls than it is trying to get actual ductwork up and in there.
Yep.
I am also in agreement on the, the textures and tones in the exterior of the building. I think the, the concrete precast you know, complements the exterior of the building well, and the, the metal panel system, I think, gives it a more modern look. So I like it so far. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, Chris. Cindy, your hand was next.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, I do like, I like the color choices. I like the tones, the textures. I do like the idea of the canopy over the cafeteria. My question is, with the signage, is that, is that, is the canopy over the cafeteria gonna be an issue with the signage? Are you not gonna be able to see that signage? Is it gonna, that's my only question about that. And I, I like the idea about the heating, as long as everyone, it's confirmed that it's not gonna interrupt the classroom in any way, shape or form, but that's the only thing was that that can, I really do think we need a canopy over there. But does that mean that Anna Reynolds signage should, will be compromised?
Let us study that. Cindy, I don't have a good answer yet, but we will, we may have to move the signage a little bit so it's not conflicting with this new canopy.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Cindy. Jeremy?
Yeah, I like it too. I think closing the gap would probably be a good idea, or maybe even put some lights underneath there. I don't know if there's any plan for lights underneath that pathway. I'd like to see a little bit better fully. It just looks like, it's kind of like Arizona or something in my mind. So if we get something that's a little bit more, more northeast, I think that would be nice, just a small thing. And as far as these parking pillars here, these stops, I just don't think there's enough of them. I think that the gaps between them are a bit enlarged. So I don't know if that's been addressed. I'd like to see maybe one in each of those gaps. You know, just to kind of make sure that, you know, even the smallest cars can't get in. That's just my only feedback on, on this rendering.
Thank you. Good feedback. We'll, we'll continue to develop this further.
Okay. Anyone else? Carol?
I also like the design. I do have a question about the metal panels. How will they hold up as far as dents with hail or kids throwing rocks at them? And I know we wouldn't want that to happen, but it might happen in the off-hours. So that is a concern that I have about the metal panels.
Yeah, I mean, that's valid. We do use these on a lot of, of our schools. But almost any material can get damaged, but you're right. They can get dinged up with any kind of vandalism, sure.
Well, I'm also thinking at recess time, sometimes the kids are throwing the balls, and a ball may hit an outside panel. Not on purpose, of course. And what, what, how will they, they hold up in the future as far as dents and scrapes and scratches go?
Yeah. It is possible that could happen, to be quite honest. I'm not sure if they're throwing balls against the wall.
Well, I mean, when children are playing catch, if you're out at recess, there's frisbees and balls and jump ropes, and sometimes they hit the building because somebody didn't catch the ball. Not that people would be doing it on purpose, but I do think that's something we need to keep in mind if these metal panels are going to be all around the outside of the building, and our playgrounds are so close. You know, they're not far away from the building. They're right outside the building.
Yeah, good question, Carol. I think we could do is, these metal panels are used on a lot of schools now. We can investigate some that they've been up for a while now, and specifically on elementary schools to see if in fact they're, they are holding up. You know, we could take a look at it, okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Chris, did you have your hand up, or did you not take it down?
No, just one more quick question that Carol just reminded me of. We, in the fire department, have been on that property numerous times of kids jumping up onto the roof because of the low height. Is there any consideration for maybe parapet walls or something to not have it quite as easy for these kids to be able to just climb up on the, the window sills and jump right up on the roof and then not be able to get down like it's happened?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I'm quite sure how to prevent that. Any kind of, so you have, is that how they're getting on the roof now, climbing on the window sill?
To my recollection, the last time was probably about a year or so ago, but yeah, in that particular instance, I believe they were able to climb up on some of the aluminum framework for the windows and get himself up and just didn't quite have the same courage to come back down.
They're currently climbing up through the air conditioner units.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense, Jason. Yeah, that makes sense also.
Oh, so they're standing on the air conditioning units to get up. Is that correct?
That's the most recent. They used to use the bike rack, but that's been bolted a couple of years ago, so now they go through the air conditioning units.
And so good news is those go away. We'll make it a little more difficult for them, but you know, they're kind of like squirrels. they're kind of like squirrels at times. You know, if they've got something in their head, they're going to find a way to do it.
Damn those children.
Yeah, they're very determined. Now, I mean that in a bad way because that that can end up being good down the road, right?
Absolutely. All right, thanks.
I guess we could, we could try to manage uh, sort of the the profiles on anything we do with the windows in the precast band at the top below the window sill to make sure they're not, they're even slope or um, it's not too deep. I mean, we could uh, we could look at that.
Yeah, I, I would just hate to have them step right on that cast stone and just be able to even be closer and go straight up. That's all.
Okay, we'll put that under this.
Okay. Paul, do you have anything else?
Do not. Thank you. Good feedback.
All right. Um, so I think we've kind of given you a little bit more direction. So keep moving forward. Um, and uh, we look forward to seeing you at our, at our next meeting. Uh, next is, yep.
The mechanical unit is really pressing for me. So um, Marty distributed it to you. Um, I think the only answer I owe at the moment is if it has a big protection against viruses, which I'll find out from our mechanical.
Yeah, it's viruses and as long as Lou is happy, you know, the district is happy with the the decibel level um, that it's not disruptive. Um, I, I think it's a good use. Um, for our particular building, it also um, will help on beefing up the structural steel. Um, when the roof is done over, we won't need to have uh, as much uh, dusting work up there and reinforcement. Uh, if we go with this type of unit. So I see some.
And then that'd be great. I appreciate it. Help us move forward. Thank you.
All right. And um, we're going to move on to construction manager's update. Um, I think we have both Marnie and Jim um, from Construction Services Group with us. Want to give us an update on where you are and where we are? I know you, yeah, you've actually given us uh, a quote for the pull tests and on the routes that need to be done. Um, that I'm sure we'll go ahead and do, but why don't you go ahead and walk us through where where you've been since the last time we talked?
Yeah, so um, Jeff distributed a proposal from E- Eagle Rivet, who does all of the um, regular maintenance and repairs to the roof at Anna Reynolds. And I've been working with Jennifer to obtain a quote for Eagle to um, go to Anna Reynolds, do thirty-two test cuts of the existing roof in all different areas of the roof, all different ages of the roof and so on. And what what's going to take place is Castle Booze will have folks there to look at the condition of the roof deck. After all of the uh, uh, test cuts have been made and then Eagle Rivet will have a company called OMG do pull tests of the roof, which again, basically will also determine the um, durability and the and the remaining life of the um, roof deck. And this whole exercise is meant to give Newfield some concrete uh, evidence uh, for their SD estimate on whether or not replacement of the roof deck will be required. And if so, is it a universal replacement? Is it just some areas and so forth? So the uh, date we're moving forward with is I believe next Friday and Monday. Eagle will be on site. Um, Castle Booze will have folks on site and we've also um, set up Environment to be on site as well. And what they're going to do is take some samples of different roofing materials to determine what kind of hazardous materials we have up there. So they'll, they'll run tests for asbestos and PCBs and and that kind of thing. And um, again, that information will help us firm up a estimate on the replacement cost of the roof based on hazardous material content. So tonight, um, I need the building committee to take action on the proposal from Eagle Revet for three thousand and twenty dollars. And once approved, we can proceed with that work. Anybody have any questions on that or the procedure, the process?
Jeff, I have a question of you. Do we need to make a motion to approve this for the three thousand? Yeah, we do. Okay. All right. So then our installation motion that we accept a proposal from Eagle Rivet.
Heltor Minor has his hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Chris.
No, just two quick things, Marty. Uh, one is do we not have any expense within Environment or that is that under contract specifically to their work already with the district?
Yes, so they're under contract uh, with uh, the district, but uh, the way we've handled this in the past is they will provide invoices for their scope of work as it relates to Anna Reynolds. Um, they'll provide invoices to me and you know, to the committee. So those invoices will actually end up um, going to the state as part of your um, total reimbursement. So although we're we're kind of using the town's uh, purchase order, for lack of a better word, as long as we have the actual invoices uh, set aside for what they do at Anna Reynolds, it'll go through the grant application funding process.
Okay, so we're able to just back those in basically versus having to do a proposal in advance and deal with them one by one. All right. And the second question was, have we not done any advanced testing in the last few years? Maybe this is better for Lou as part of the considerations for renovation up there for any of these pull tests or deck, deck condition testing?
Lou, if you don't mind, if I could just weigh in on this before um, before going uh, before you responding. So Jennifer and I met with John Luby of Environment um, before Jennifer went on vacation last week. And we had a quite lengthy meeting on what testing is going to be required at the school. So so Lou can can confirm this. He's done various uh, abatement projects over the years. And what we needed was comprehensive information on exactly what hazardous material we have left in the school. So Environment happens to be out there uh, working for Lou for um, what is it, Lou? The abatement of the cafeteria floor?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're out there. So um, Environment is going to continue. They may actually be out there uh, today, tomorrow, as we speak, they're going to continue doing comprehensive testing of the school. One issue I do need to follow up with, um, Steve, I was going to uh, talk to you about this and Lou as well is the scope of PCB testing at the school. Um, the PCB testing has different implications um, with the requirements for abatement. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let John Luby with Environment explain that further. Um, Stephen, and I can ask him to participate at the next building committee meeting if you'd like.
Yeah, I think that would be good. Yeah.
Yeah, there are certain um, requirements and and I don't want to misspeak, so I'm not going to get too detailed. Where if you do test for PCBs and you do find um, that they exist, you have an obligation to remove um, everything in the building of that, of that same type. Um, assuming that it's PCB. And alternatively, you can, i- if your scope of work is limited, you can dispose of let's say um, construction debris as PCB waste, just assume it's PCB waste and dispose of it as such without having to do uh, additional testing or abatement. So so I I can't really go into any more depth other than that because I'm out of my league. So I'll ask John to attend uh, the next meeting to explain that to everyone further.
Okay, thank you. Lou, is there anything you wanted to add?
Uh, Marty's points are exactly right. Uh, when you engage in active testing to determine the condition of any spot, and let's just say it's uh, the surround uh, of any window, you know, you're going to do a foot and a half in all directions, inside and out. And if that comes back hot, that basically puts you on the clock to either test everything or remediate everything for all those uh, uh, similar conditions. And the basic practice has been to uh, take the route that Marty described of uh, uh, taking the presumption of PCB with the general waste. And they will do a test on the disposal to see what the density is or the, you know, how hot the overall uh, uh, debris stream is, and then they'll classify it accordingly. That typically is a much more uh, cost effective approach and uh, does not put you on the clock to do all the other things. So if you want, we're doing just a selective uh, amount of work in one area of the building by opening up the testing window, then the whole building comes into play. So you can do selective work uh, without triggering the clock.
Okay.
And Lou, just real quick, those windows were done in the eighties, nineties, or maybe Steve, you remember when they were done?
They were done, I think, late seventies, early eighties.
Yeah, right. Yep, yes.
We actually um, discussed those at length and ironically Castle Booze was the um, architect of record for that replacement. However, we weren't able to determine if any PCB uh, uh, caulk existed around the perimeter of the old window. So we really don't know if there are PCBs uh, in the brick that surrounds the window.
And again, the district, you know, through maintenance could have added some back in the late seventies, early eighties. Um, you know, recaulking. So that's where it's probably, it's test hot. That's where it's more than likely going to be, right? Or in the caulking around those windows. That's um, but again, as we move forward, that's all going to go. So it it and I think the approach is right. It just, it's presumed to have some PCBs in it and we just look at it as bulk.
Just to clarify, Marty, that that is atypical for building of this age to have the PCBs present, especially in a window glazing caulking material, correct?
It is, but we don't know if the PCB caulk existed. Uh, we know it was obviously removed when the windows were replaced, but we don't know if there's PCB residue uh, remaining on the, on the brick that surrounds the window. And of course, we're going to be replacing the windows again as part of this project.
Yeah, but most of the brick.
Goes away anyways.
Goes away, right? Not all.
It does. It does.
In classrooms, most of the brick is gone already. We have those, you know, very unsightly panels.
It does. It's, it's the core areas like the gym and the cafeteria that we're concerned about.
Yeah, but there aren't many windows there either. So let's hope.
Right, right.
Okay. So I'm back to uh, again, I just did a motion um, that we approved the Eagle Rivet quote for three thousand and twenty dollars uh, to uh, perform sampling and pull tests on the roof. Someone would like to move that motion?
Yeah, make the motion as presented.
Okay. By Chris Minor in second.
Second.
Second by Mike Camillo. Any discussion or any further discussion? All those in favor?
Can we get a senior setter, senior citizen discount?
I don't think, I don't know if we could get any lower. There's two days of work for three thousand dollars. I don't know how they could do that for two days of work for three thousand dollars, to be honest with you.
All right, so I had to ask.
Yeah.
I think, I think the low price is based upon their goodwill with Lou, to be frank.
I mean, that's, that's a pretty good rate, I think.
Yeah. I was just kidding.
Yeah, I I know, I know that, Steve. Um, so all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone, anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Mar, anything else, Marty or Jim?
Yeah, uh, real, real quick, um, Jeff and I have been in email correspondence. Jeff is uh, starting to put together the um, contract for Newfield Construction. And I'm working together with him on that. I actually owe him a return email, which I uh, plan on getting to tomorrow. So we're assembling that contract and all the exhibits. So that is also in progress. And then I'll be dropping off um, CSG signed contracts at Town Hall tomorrow as well.
Okay.
And that's it.
All right, thank you. Uh, we're going to move on then to uh, the construction manager's update and Ty, no, Tom is with us, but before I turn the meeting over to Tom, I just want to give the rest of the committee and any of the public that's listening a little bit of an update. Uh, obviously, the committee members all know through the interview process, Newfield um, suggested that there is a strong possibility in their view that um, replacing the building versus renovating the building might be better off for the district, for the town. Uh, save the district money, save the state money. And there was a couple of meetings um, between CSG, KBA, myself and uh, a couple of members of the committee, just to kind of see where this is going to go. Uh, just to give you a brief update before I turn it over to Tom. Again, initially, there was uh, savings of around four million dollars is what the initial budget had showed. Uh, but come to find out that that was based on a gross square foot new building of fifty-five thousand square feet. And I'm, this is not exact. You know, this might be fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty. I don't have that figure in front of me, but roughly fifty-five thousand square feet. Um, and there would have been a four million dollar savings if in fact the building, new building could fit into the lower site, which is basically where the uh, athletic field is now and make everything else work around it. Uh, in those meetings that we had, um, it was clear with Castle Booze and Newfield that while the fifty-five thousand is a square footage allotment that the state gives you, the educational program that we have right now is forty-five thousand square feet in the building. And the fifty-five thousand square foot building, that program would not fit. So they think right now it's going to be somewhere around sixty thousand gross square feet. And with that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Tom um, to kind of run through where he is, had his estimates and uh, what direction we as a uh, committee want to go in. Tom?
Okay, Steve, thanks. Can you um, give me screen sharing or?
Yeah, you have it. You should have it already.
All right. So can you see that spreadsheet?
Yep.
Okay, so what this is, this is, this is how we arrived at our, at our costs, okay? Um, it's based on historical data. So if you look at this, these light blue columns, these are renovation projects that are, have been completed. And this is our historical square foot, per square foot cost for each of these divisions of construction. So what we did was we took these projects and we averaged them. And that's what we use um, for the square foot numbers for the Anna Reynolds School for the renovation project. We did the same thing for new, tried to pick two projects that are very close in size and in scope to Anna Reynolds, which is Rocky Hill. Um, that was completed in twenty nineteen in Mansfield, which is ongoing right now. So again, we did the same thing. We took those square footage costs. Now, these are actual bids that came in. These are actual costs. Um, we averaged them and that's what we use for the Anna, Anna Reynolds new cost. Now we took a look at the new costs and we looked at the project and said, okay, some of these numbers, I don't know if you can see that, they're italicized. Those were actually changed. They were bumped a little bit because the building at Anna Reynolds is a little bigger than, say, the demolition of the building in Rocky Hill. So we've included in the new scenario, demolishing the existing building. Um, another number that we adjusted, I think, was uh, yeah, the site. We added about four hundred thousand dollars because we're obviously going to encounter some rock. Um, so then we came up with these square footage costs and probably should jump to the next spreadsheet because that one summarizes it a little better. Are you seeing this spreadsheet now?
Yep, you have the new one up.
So what this is, um, this is those, those square footage costs summarized based on the size of the building. So for example, um, for the renovate project as it stands, as Steve said, the original Collier's um, analysis uh, assumed that this building was about sixty-five thousand square feet. And it's not. It's because uh, some spaces that the state makes you count. That the state makes you count, I don't think they accounted for, so it's really a sixty nine thousand square foot building. And when you come down and you and you figure out all the costs, um and the states, you know, we plugged in the state, the town's reimbursement rate of fifty eight point five seven percent. Um we come up with a cost to the town of. Um. Well, it's, it's eighteen million dolla- eighteen one seventy four, eighteen point two, call it, if you don't get a space waiver. Now, that's another. Another explanation. So the state allows you so many square feet per student. If you exceed that. They penalize you and reduce your, your reimbursed, your reimbursed costs. So if you get a space waiver, the cost of the town would be back to this, to the fourteen point four million or fourteen point four six million. So if we take the allowable square footage, I know this is, this is very confusing. And apply it to the new building, everything in the salmon color is a new building. This is what the state allows you. They allow you fifty three thousand six ninety two net square footage. And with an allowance for exterior walls and so forth, that's gonna make us build a building that's fifty six thousand three hundred and seventy seven square feet. And if you work that down, you'll notice that the reimbursement rate is ten percent less, because that's what the state does. They allow you ten percent less for new construction. Um we're coming up with a cost, a project cost of thirty one point two versus almost thirty five for the renovation project. So how this breaks down with the state portion versus uh the town portion is is down here at the bottom. Um. Sixteen million cost to the town and the state would pay only fifteen point one million. Um if you, you don't need a space waiver if you stick with their, with their space standards, okay? Um so the potential cost of the town is the same. Now, I understand that we've been told that you expended about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. On fees to date, so the actual cost of the town would be more like sixteen point two nine million. Now, we, we rolled this scenario out for several different size buildings, because a lot of times, oftentimes, the state's. Uh square footage standards per student are very old, they're about thirty years old, and you really can't fit the program in. So we went up in like two thousand square foot increments of net square footage, so from the fifty three allowable, we went to fifty five six ninety two. And we ran the numbers out for that, we ran it out for uh an additional four thousand net square feet. And the, the reason why these are green, because that's kind of the, the sweet spot, if you will, which doesn't exceed. The town, the town's portion of the cost, uh which was, I believe, in the referendum seventeen million seven fifty. But again, for this one, you would need, uh I don't know if you'd get it, but you, you'd request a space waiver. And that's the difference between whether it's gonna cost the town seventeen million or sixteen point five million, call it. And again, the two hundred and fifty thousand that was uh already spent, you know. Uh results in a seventeen point three million uh potential cost of the town, and it increases as the building gets bigger. So it's really a matter of how, how much space is needed to fit the program. And over here on the right, I showed the, I think what you've been told, um based on what we saw for budgets that were previously presented. Um these are, these figures represent um what was being uh published before, before we got on board. So two things, we, we didn't agree with the square footage that the previous consultants came up with. And the uh our cost per square foot um are, are different as well.
I do apologize, uh the audio went out on my end of the uh computer screen, so I did not catch that last comment.
I said that the two things we didn't agree with on the original studies were the square footage, the sixty four nine versus the sixty nine three, and we've. We had KBA uh confirm that via, via survey. Um so we're pretty confident this, we're confident that this sixty nine three oh eight is the correct square footage for the building. The other thing is the, the cost per square foot now, they uh, they assumed that the new building was gonna cost five hundred and six dollars a square foot. For construction costs and we're at four thirty seven, between four thirty seven and four thirty one, and that's based on, again, that, that first spreadsheet I showed you. That's based on projects that have recently been completed by Newfield.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't know, Jim, how, um Steve, how, how much in depth you want me to go, if you want me to present, you know, we, we also prepared a schedule comparison. Um. And this is if we, this is the, the first columns here are for the current schedule. Um. You know, we're on track to, to complete the design by the end of March, bid an award by June first and start construction in June of twenty twenty two. Uh this was a twenty seven month schedule, so we'd finish in nine twenty twenty four. Um if we go with new and we don't, we don't need a referendum. Um KBA has requested a couple of weeks, two, two weeks or so to do as an initial study. Um to cite the building and figure out if, you know, how the program can fit in, in what square footage we would need. Um we allowed a couple of days to, to uh go to OSCG to get their blessing. Um and then, of course, in this scenario, we're not gonna have a referendum and the town will release KBA uh for the design on approximately eight twenty five. We may be a little bit behind this, these are, these are uh, well, I don't know, this, this schedule. Um they would need another couple of weeks to, to actually finish up the programming. Uh I believe KBA is gonna design this thing in about ten months. And then we just, you know, we go, go from there, um bidding would occur in July. Uh we'd start in October instead of, instead of June. And we'd finish in May of twenty twenty four because it's be like about a nineteen month schedule for construction versus the twenty seven. And that includes removing the old building. The only caveat to that is when we start, when we finish, you know, we obviously, if we finish the. The new building in January, then we can't, you know, we can't, we can take the old building down, but we can't get the, the fields planted. Um until, until the uh planting season in the spring, so that, you know, that's a little caveat there, but. Right, that schedule works, works well, because we're, we could complete the project in May. If you need a new referendum. Um we assumed that that referendum would occur on Election Day, eleven two. And that pushes the schedule out a little more because you couldn't release, or you could, but you might not wanna release KBA for design. Until uh the next day, November third. And that puts us, you know, with the design, same design period, that gets us starting in December and finishing in July of twenty twenty four.
Um. Let me, let me hold you up there for a minute, Tom, okay? Um. Just so everybody understands, uh the, the reason we have that scenario of the multiple square footages right now is that. In order to cite the building on the lower parcel. KB, we need to engage uh KBA to do a study to tell Newfield how big that building is gonna be. And. If in fact it'll fit down there and the programs, what space the new programs are going to need in the, in the new building. That would be a two-story building, most likely. Well, it actually definitely be a two-story building, uh just because of the grades. Uh we don't know the extent of rock, um we have a rough idea, or they have, Newfield has a rough idea, but they had. The last boring is, I believe, we're done and uh we're in nineteen ninety nine, um so no new borings have been done, and we also don't have a site. You know, a specific site where the building is going to be. Um and what we also don't know, there's a meeting set up for next Tuesday is with the state. Do we need a new referendum? Do we not need a new referendum? If we need a new referendum and we don't lose our grant commitment. This schedule that you see here would probably work. If in fact, we have to have a referendum and we lose our grant commitment. We go back to square one, so we start the process over like we did eighteen months ago. We need to apply. For a grant commitment by June thirtieth of twenty twenty two for approval. Um by the School of uh Office of Construction Grants in December of twenty two. And then, just like we got approval in February from the legislative body. Um to move this forward, that would then happen, and I think actually Lou and um Dr. Brumeter are in receipt. Of our commitment letter from the state. Uh those are questions that we don't have answers to yet, so I think you could possibly add. You know, twelve to fifteen months is worst case scenario on the schedule, just because of the, those timelines that I gave you. For the grant commitment and the legislative action uh to get funding are fixed. They don't, they don't change. Um and I, I don't know where we are, so that's why we are looking at. Kind of a, you know, if we add two thousand, four thousand, five thousand. Um you know, I think I, like I said earlier before Tom started, is that everybody was in agreement that the fifty five thousand or fifty eight. Gross square foot building um is not gonna carry the program for educational space that we have now. Um again, so we have a thirty eight hundred square foot gym. Would you rebuild a new building with a thirty hundred square foot gym? Probably not. You'd want it to be bigger, so now where is, where is that space gonna come from? Are you able to take it someplace else? Um uh again, I, the wonderful thing about a new building versus renovate. Is I can't say, and only anyone could say, that the kids aren't gonna be disrupted. If there's a construction project going on the site, there's gonna be some disruption. Um to the site, but it won't be in the building, so that is definitely a plus. Um but the, I guess the negatives, if we lose the. The commitment letter and have to start over, that means we need to go back to, to referendum, um it needs to pass. Uh in order for us to keep moving forward. Um. I guess I'm gonna give everybody else a, a shot. Jeremy, you had your hand up first this time, so.
Thank you. Um alright, yeah, so I like the idea of a new building, I do. I think uh it. Uh considering what we're finding in the building now with the uh asbestos, it seems to be everywhere throughout the building. The uh with PCB, do I have that acronym right? I'm not a building guy. Um that everywhere, I, I know that it's not, uh these particulates are not. Good for the kids, possible carcinogens. Um my cut, my question would be though, when we talk about this square foot. Uh the cost per square foot um between Colliers and, and you know, Newfield here. Um was this whole COVID inflation thing taken into account uh by either party? Because I know that building something now, I just built the room I'm sitting in basically, and it cost me probably thirty percent more than had I done it two years ago.
Um Steve, I'd like to just not answer that completely. Tom's gonna have to weigh in, but I do wanna point something out about the Colliers estimate.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um so the Colliers estimate um for a construction cost was actually based on. It was a twenty seven million dollar cost. Um roughly twenty seven, twenty six million. I could pull up the exact number, but the reason why um. Colliers construction cost of twenty eight million is, is look so high, the five oh six is square foot. Is because they escalated it by three and a half percent. Per year compounding for three years until two thousand twenty three, because at the time. Um an architect hadn't been hired, you know, J C J, of course, did the, the preliminary work, but. Uh there wasn't an architect uh hired for design, so i- in my mind, they didn't know when the construction start date would be. So I just wanted to e- explain where that twenty eight million dollar uh figure came from, so. Um now that we're, of course, starting in uh potentially two thousand twenty two, the scenario is different.
Okay, so just to answer, I think what was the original question was, yes, we do have escalation in there, and nobody knows. What the COVID impact will be, you know, when we start this project um down the road, but. Um some of these numbers, like for example, that, that Mansfield project was bid while the COVID thing was going on, so. Some of, yes, I, I would say yes, that we've accounted for what we know. Steve?
Yes, go ahead, Chris. You're, you, you're done, Jeremy?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, basically, yeah, I mean, that's what I wanted to kind of figure out the money piece, and then um. Um my only reservation, thinking about this, I think a new building is probably the best path forward, looking at the numbers and, and the delay in schedule isn't too big of a deal. Uh my concern is the referendum piece, uh but I, from what I understand, that's, that's kind of up in the air. Uh is that correct? You have to meet with the state about this.
Well, let, let me, Jeremy, in all fairness, what we've been told by the state is that we need a new referendum. We haven't actually had a meeting and the boss. Of this uh from the Office of School of Construction Grants hasn't said that. Everybody in his office has said that we need one. So it's not official till we meet with them. That'll be next Tuesday, then we'll know for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, um Chris, you were next.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, just, just several comments, uh first of which. Is Colliers made it very clear on the record and the minutes are still available. As to how they are coming up with their construction costs when they did the preliminary estimating for the project. And that was, as Marty described, estimating the project out into the twenty two, twenty three. Threshold of construction at three and a half percent annually. As the numbers that Newfield is using, they're working backwards and, correct me if I'm wrong, are you carrying? Three and a half percent annually forward from those numbers? Are you holding those as being the numbers?
Well, if you, if you recall the, the first chart there, I, I, this is gets very technical with the um. So Rick did this whole thing, we carry escalation to the midpoint of construction. So Rick, our chief estimator here, does, has his whole calculation um of how he calculates the escalation. I don't think it's a three and a half percent because he doesn't see that as, as realistic. Um for example, some of these projects are old, so it's hard to, to know exactly what he did, but this one is, has been marked up twenty three point seven six percent. For a project that finished in twenty sixteen. Um and you know, as you get projects that are twenty twenty one, this is Jefferson School in, in Norwalk. That was only marked up four point four four percent for escalation. So he did study it and he put on there what he would, what he's gonna be putting on the estimate that you're gonna see. In, in, at your next meeting when we, we give you the SD estimate for the renovation project. He'll use those same percentages. I don't know what they are, I think he's in the twos.
Okay, but just, just to clarify again, I believe, and again, we double checked the record on it, that they were carrying a three and a half percent. If that's the case and they came under, great, that's just gonna be that much better of a cost for us, for the end user. But the other thing that's a little frustrating to me is, we did all this work at the beginning of this project to compare. A new construction project to the renovated as new and made the decision as a committee to move forward as the renovated as new. Based on the information we had at that time. Now, the question of the square footage miscalculation is, you know, essentially four thousand square feet. And four thousand square feet to me should not throw that number so far out of whack to have a new construction project be. More financially feasible to do on that square footage. Do we know exactly how that square footage became off? And what we submitted to the, you know, two thousand grant application to the state, what square footage did we submit at that time?
I do, Chris, but so Colliers left off intentionally the space underneath the um cafeteria. I believe, which is the backside of the gym. They did not count that because they didn't think, they thought it would skew our numbers in the opposite direction, we would get it too high. You know, um because it is just strictly storage space, so there is, I, I'm gonna guess. Out of the four thousand, twenty five hundred to three thousand, they intentionally left off, I think there's a couple of the mechanical rooms. That they didn't pick up. Um so they did miss, you know, maybe five hundred, seven hundred square feet, but they didn't miss four thousand. They left off some intentionally, because they didn't think it belonged there, and I, I've been speaking to Colliers. They, again, they, they believe that their budget is, is strong enough to carry um any of those additional spaces um that were missed. With the money that we had.
Okay, and those are basically basement spaces, mechanical room unfinished is essentially the.
That's correct.
Talking about.
Correct.
Okay, and just one last comment, uh as these discussions have gone on over the last several weeks. It is my understanding that a new referendum would be required, so step one is, you would have to go before the voters again. And propose a different project and be able to justify why you're proposing a different project at this point in the ballgame. And at that point, as Steve alluded to, you would start the process by submitting a new grant application for June of twenty two. For consideration by Bond Commission. for consideration by Bond Commission in, you know, the, the spring or December twenty-two, spring of twenty-three with construction not even to begin until the earliest, the spring, well, actually it would be the summer of twenty-three, unless I'm missing something entirely. Because you're not going to be able to put any construction documents on the street until you have that commitment. That was made very clear by the council that passed the resolution. It said that we would go ahead, once we had confirmed the grant commitments from the state. There were considerations that we might not potentially get those considerations in light of COVID. But luckily for us, we were able to continue. I would just hate to jeopardize the entire timeline and push this thing back another year and a half to two years, which would in essence bump it out another, you know, three to six to seven percent in escalation, just for this consideration. Just be curious to any other committee members' comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Dr. Broman, you had your hand up next.
Thank you. Yeah, I do want to echo what has been already stated that a new referendum is absolutely inevitable if this goes to a, a new construction. I've, I've confirmed that. And I've also confirmed orally, I know we're going to wait till Tuesday to say it out loud, that absolutely a new grant application would have to transpire. But I'm more curious about, and I agree, I've talked to Colliers, they stand by their numbers, like everyone has said. What I'm curious about is if this building were to go into a rocky ledge type setup, how did that figure of four hundred thousand come into play? Because we will have additional site work. Our, our current site work is pretty limited and no, no elaborate playground upgrades because the current playgrounds are in pretty good shape. So I, is that four hundred thousand dollars meant to include all site work with regard to the, the ledge situation and ADA and other playground considerations for, for this new site, which I understand is not the softball field, but rather the hill that abuts the softball field. So I, I, is four hundred thousand dollars a realistic number? And I will say this too, I know the, the space waiver is a constant concern. I'm highly confident that we'll have successful strategies in getting a space waiver. And, you know, with that in mind, with the space waiver in play, the, the renovator's new figure is by far the lowest, which is of course what we operated on when we met with Colliers real, many, you know, a year or so ago at the start of this project. So, uh, those are my comments. Thank you.
And do you want to address those before you go to the next?
Yeah, the four hundred thousand was just Rick's, Rick, our estimator, his, his opinion of, you know, of what the rock would cost in addition to some of the other projects that we've done. He's assuming that we can stay out of the rock for, for portions of the, of the foundations. He did get some borings from the nineteen ninety-nine. He, he got a hold of those and he kind of, you know, there's not a lot of borings in the area where we want to go, but he kind of got a feel for where the rock is. Now that would be up, that would be part of that first study that you would release K B A to do. They would site the building. And then we try to figure out, you know, if that's a, that's a realistic number.
Good. Thanks, Tom. Carol, you, you are next and then Mike.
I have quite a few concerns. One of them is we've been trying to get this project going for at least six years. Now, we've made great progress. I'm thinking of the staff. I'm thinking of the children. I'm thinking of anybody who enters Anna Reynolds and we have all been there. We've all had many tours of it. If we if we build a new building, we are going now maybe two, three more years that this project is going to continue. So that is a huge concern for me. If you've been in the buildings, if you've worked at the buildings and you know the condition and you're seeing what's happening and it's not okay. It's not okay that we are going to continue or try to continue to have this progress stalled so that we can do unknowns. We don't know if the public will approve a build as new. We do know that they have approved renovate as new. We don't know if we'll get a state grant. We do know that we will be getting the money for a renovate as new. So I, I, I'm really, I'm kind of disappointed that we're even discussing this because when we did choose Newfield, we did say when they came up with that idea that we were going to stick with renovate as new. So I'm a little concerned about why we're spending all this time on this when I felt as a committee member that we had already had this set to what we were going to do. And I also am disappointed that I heard about this on Facebook today. And as a, a member of the building committee, I feel like I should have been informed before tonight's meeting. So those are my only comments.
Carol, thank you. I'll take the heat for that. The people that met and were discussing this were trying to keep it between just a very small group. Obviously, someone decided to take it to Facebook. I don't know who did. I had every intention on bringing it up tonight before I went public, but unfortunately, it's the world we live in. I didn't know where it was going. But it, it doesn't look like the advocates for this, and which was mainly Newfield, they're the ones that are pushing it right now. They, they still, they wanted to bring it to the committee. So that's why we're here in front of you tonight. I do apologize for not letting you know earlier. I didn't know where it was going.
Can you jump in for a second?
Yeah. Who is it?
This is Tom.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I, I think to characterize it that we're pushing it, I think we're trying to present numbers for the town to make an informed decision. So we prepared these documents to show you, you know, as we said in the interview, based on what we've done and what we've seen and what the trend is, is, is to build new rather than renovate when it, when it makes sense. In this case, it kind of does. But I mean, it's, it's ultimately up to the towns, you know, up to the town to decide what they want to do. We're, we've gone forward with the renovation project until we hear otherwise. We're just giving you options.
But again, in the initial discussion where this was going to save four million dollars, each and every one of these scenarios, Tom, cost the taxpayers in Newington more money except renovators do.
That's correct.
I mean, that, that's a reality. That, that's just, I'm trying to be transparent, you know, by from at least a million and a half, and from there it goes up to almost two and a half billion dollars. More money that the town will have to pay. I'm not saying one way or the other, that's good or bad, but that's just the, the fact that, that the state actually is the one, which again, they get our money and we get it back, but the state is the one that has the potential biggest savings here. If you look at that line thirteen, renovate will cost them twenty and a half million. And then from there, their worst case scenario on the biggest building that we have is sixteen-five. So the saving is on a state level, not on the municipal level. I just think that needs to be said. I don't get to make these decisions. You know, we've been charged to, to build it. So Mike, you are next.
Tom, I got a couple of questions for you. You basically just said why you're bringing this forward to us. Going with a fifty-eight thousand square foot building instead of what we have now, you're more efficient. Your hallways are going to be smaller. You're going to have a brand new state of the art building. New ball fields, new playgrounds, larger gym, larger calf. And you got a seventy-year-old building. We're going to put lipstick on, basically. And you still have a seventy-year-old building. I, I know you live in town and, and you're looking out for the best interests of residents in Newington. What do you say about being more efficient, having a better school, state of the art, and waiting a little longer to get that? And the kids wouldn't be in the middle of a construction zone, or you wouldn't have parents complaining their kids can't breathe and all that.
Again, it's not my decision.
This is for Tom.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. First of all, I, I live in Weathersfield, so.
Okay.
But, um, no, you, what you pointed out is absolutely right. I mean, we did a, we did a list of, of what we thought were pros and cons. Again, not trying to to sway this thing, but just to, just to show you, and I could, I could put that up here. Well, you know, these are things that we came up the first time on, on July nineteenth. But these are really the pros and cons. And a lot of, you mentioned a lot of things. First and foremost is the disruption to the, to the program, to the existing school. It's, it's it's not impossible, but it's difficult to do a renovation while there's young students there. You know, we recently learned that maybe, maybe like those corridor walls might have to come down, which means, you know, that's, that's a pretty major operation because of hazardous contaminants. You know, we have to shore the roof, the entire roof structure, take those, those walls down and then put either some steelers or C M U walls back to to re-support the steel because the steel bears on those corridor walls. So there's a lot of major, major things. We'll probably have to take up most of the slab in that building to replace the, or most of the slab, at least on one side, ones to replace the plumbing piping. Right now, it's in the, in the middle of the corridor. And we can't, we can't dig that deep in the middle of the corridor because again, you got the bearing walls and the footings for the, for the, for the bearing walls. We can't undermine those. There's a lot of, a lot of issues. The, the roof deck most likely going to have to come off, maybe not, maybe the pull test will be okay. But I mean, it's been leaking for years. It's a gypsum deck. Gypsum is what's contained in, in sheet rock. When it gets wet, it kind of disintegrates. It's very similar to that material. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of unforeseen. And that's one of the things, you know, change orders. There's, there's a lot of potential for change orders in, in renovating a building that, of that age. And the other thing is that, the, again, I'm trying, trying not to sell this, like the oversell this thing, but the building, really, the, the old portion of the building really does not have good bones. I mean, the structure is a little funky. The ceiling height is low. It's, again, there, there's hazardous materials, you know, you never know if you get them all.
Okay, then we're looking at one and a half million. The town would have to pay more and because you get the job done quicker than you would twenty-seven months, nineteen months. So we'd be off about six months to nine months, you would extend the project compared to what we have now.
If, depending on the referendum. You got, you're actually finishing, if you don't need a referendum, you're finishing earlier. I mean, if you need a referendum, you're still finishing in the summer of twenty-four. It's a grant question. It's the big question. Right. And I, I don't quite understand that, but you know, Costas is the guy. That's, that's the discussion on Tuesday.
See what happens with that. And then the other thing is, this is for the Board of Ed. You got a school that's going to get renovated or new. What are you going to do different to take care of them? That's, that's what's been lacking all these years. Hopefully that changes with your new facilities manager.
Jim, did you want to say something?
Yeah, if you don't mind, if, if I may share my screen, if I'm able.
You should be able to.
I'm not sure if you could all see that or not.
It just popped up.
Okay. Um, you know, my main concern in my, in our discussion with the state on Tuesday, you know, besides new grant application and new referendum is more in line with the net square footage. You know, we've talked about and I've heard discussions about four thousand square feet over. I'm utilizing K B A's square foot analysis. If you look here and now the state always talks in terms of net square foot. And I understand, you know, our budgets are based on gross square footage because that's what we're building to. However, the state talks in terms of net square footage. And looking at your grant here, you have sixty-one thousand eight hundred nineteen that was included in your grant application. The current calculations as a result of K B A's due diligence, sixty-five, six thirteen for net difference of thirty-seven ninety-four. However, that's not the difference that the state is going to look at. The state is going, always reverts back to your square footage based on your highest projected enrollment, which is fifty-three thousand, six ninety-two. So your square foot difference is almost twelve thousand square feet, not thirty-eight hundred. I just want to make sure everybody is aware of that. So the state's going to look at this number as your allowable square foot number. And as a result of where you are, you have a difference of around eighty-one hundred square foot difference right now between what was submitted and what's allowable. So I just want to make sure, because you know, we're talking, you know, yeah, we have a difference in square footage of around four thousand. It's not four thousand. It's more than that.
Okay. Okay. Yep. Mike, were you done?
Now I am. Thank you.
Okay. Chris Minor, I believe you're next.
Thank you, Steve. Just to go back, I mean, I think we're talking a lot in circles with a lot of unknowns. I think the, the course of action for right now should be to allow the pull test to occur. That'll give us an idea on roof conditions and possible environmental concerns there. As well as having the PCB first blush look should occur now to find out if that is going to be more problematic than what was currently estimated. Because I know that there was some environmental estimates that were initially created from Colliers. And then the other issue is to find out from the state in terms of what the timeline would be and whether or not space waivers would be allowable and what consideration for what programming square footage to grow square footage. So we're, you know, throwing all these square footage numbers around and you can make them look however, which way you want to at first blush, but until we start to get those detailed numbers, we're just all throwing shots in the dark up until that point. And, you know, I think to do anything before we have any of that information would be premature at best. And I don't think we'd be responsible. But, you know, like I said earlier, my biggest problem is we had these conversations almost a year and a half plus ago that led us to follow the path that we led and to have a O P M that is no longer in the process and a progress is just eerily reminiscent to me of other town projects where we don't have the input from the parties that were involved at that time to be able to defend themselves at this time. And in terms of, you know, the Board of Education maintaining their buildings, that's not just a Board of Education problem. That is a systemic problem within the town of Newington historically of not maintaining their buildings the way they should be maintained. Moving forward, we need to do better. I agree with Mike on that part, but it is not just the Board of Ed. It's both sides. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Cindy.
I have a lot of concerns. Basically, I agree with Carol. I, and I agree with Chris. This committee had many meetings and decided on this. I do feel like this is not a decision that should be made today after we're just hearing this information. There's a lot of bits and pieces. I'm really concerned that the, the public won't vote for a referendum to put a new building through. The people who voted for the renovated as new were, were okay with renovate as new. And I want to tell you, sitting at the polls last year, I heard many people say, you know, that, that question, vote no. So I'm not sure that's going to go through if we have to go to referendum. There's a lot of concerns I have. And I do want to clarify about, clarify about, about the comment about the building maintenance. That is systemic. The other concern I have is the question about the if the playgrounds were considered within this reconfiguration was not answered, then that needs to be answered. I'm really concerned. I'm really concerned that people out in the public Facebook knew all about this before us, whether I don't care that you met today and maybe we should have known who's Who's, who was allowed to be in that meeting? Who was allowed to share that? That's not okay. Because in that, we have information out there that's not true yet, and the committee members haven't even seen that. So there's a lot of things I'm really concerned about, and I'm concerned about the morale of the teachers. Um. They're excited about this new renovation. It's now it's gonna be pushed back. I don't know that we can make an informed decision tonight. Based on all the, like, as Chris said, we're getting all these numbers. I'm trying to take notes. I'm trying to listen to what you're saying and, and the steps and the, you know. This versus that, and it's, there's a lot of stuff here. Um. I'm not comfortable making the decision based on information that was just given to us today, based on this information. In the fact that we've had information all along that helped us make a decision about where we are today as renovated as new. So very concerned.
Yeah, and again, I apologize, um, for not sharing it with the committee. Um, I gave my reasons before, I'm not gonna repeat them, but I'll, I'll, again. I'm chairing this committee, I take the heat. Um. Tom, do you want to answer her question about the playgrounds before we move to the next, uh? Building.
Playgrounds or playscapes? Both, both are included, by the way, so.
Okay, well, that, that answers the question. Did you hear that, Cindy?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Steve, Sylvia?
Thank you, Steve. Um, first, I'd like to, uh. I'll thank the O P M that we have for bringing this to our attention for good, uh, discussion and, and decision. Um, but my gut is telling me. Uh, we stay the course. We made our decisions. We picked the path that we're taking. And, um, I'm, I'm very much, um. Uh, with Carol's and Cindy's mindset of, uh, I don't want to go backwards. I certainly do not want to take this back before the town. Um, I want to continue the positive aspects that we have. And be able to report on the limitations that we have in front of us because of that. Uh, so my, if we were to ask for a vote tonight, I would say, thank you very much for presenting numbers and your perspective. But we stayed the course, renovated is new. Um, and obviously, uh, it. We've always been, um, proceeding with trying to get the, uh, space waivers. Uh, I've had the privilege of meeting, uh, with, uh, Lou and Dr. Brummett and the, uh, state representatives and. I walked away from that particular meeting with a confidence level that the state, uh, that the waivers would probably not present. A major, um, hindrance to the project. So, um. My take as of this moment is, is we stay the course, renovate as new. And let the dollars fall where they fall. And we make our decisions based upon what the referendum has granted us as our, uh, pool table bumpers. So, um. Uh, again, I thank you for the presentation and the information, and it, it does give us. A pause to think, you know, did we make the right choice? But I think we have. And, uh, I, I'm good to go forward with what we have to date, Steve, so. Um, I, I don't have any issues with this being rehashed. It's always good to look back and say, did we make the right choice? But we, I feel we have, and. I li- I'm willing to live with it. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Steve. And, and maybe I didn't make it clear. I, we're not looking, or I am not looking for any kind of a vote tonight. Uh, we need to have the meeting with the state, and the next time we come together, then we will have specific answers to all questions. Um, and then we can make an informed decision on, on which way we want to go. Jeremy, you had your hand up next.
Yeah, yeah, I'm thinking based on who's here tonight. I think po- politics, town politics have kind of crept their way into this process, like. I was afraid they would. Um, you know, and it's all kind of very subtle, you know, that, uh, the timing of everything is, is kind of interesting. Uh, I, I don't want to kick the can down the road anymore. I think that's what would happen. Um, in, in, in thinking about, you know, doing a new building and changing the plan. Uh, people right now are still not willing to spend money. They're just not, and, uh. If it's more of a cost of the town, there's probably a good chance that it may not pass referendum, and I think there's people that know that. And I think that that's part of the, the, the plan. I don't like what's going on. Um, I, I hate the fact that I find about, about things on Facebook too also, and that I find out about things on the night of the meeting. Um, and thinking about it, it'd be great to have a brand new building, it'd be great to have a lot of new buildings in town, because frankly, this is the kind of thing. Has gone on for too long in Newington. Where everything is pushed along, someone comes in with a great idea at the end, and then nothing gets done. It's about time we changed that, and I think we stay the course.
Thank you, Jeremy. Chris?
I'm not gonna say anything more, because Jeremy hit exactly everything I just wanted to, to state. And I think it's time that we just continue the course and stay, move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Tom, is there anything else that you want to add before we move on?
No, just that, uh, as I stated somewhere in the middle there, that we are working on the, the estimate, the schematic design estimate. And we'll be prepared to present that at your next meeting. Um, we've been going back and forth with K B A, we're gonna reconcile, um, with their estimator, I think, next week. Um, so we'll be ready.
And let me ask you, Tom, would that, depending on how those numbers come out, that could possibly change your projections of what you showed us tonight?
Uh, it's possible, yes.
Okay. Okay. Um. So just before we move off of this, so again, I'm, I'll try to be as transparent as I can. Um, again, I wasn't behind this move. Um, I've kind of walked into it. But anyways, we are meeting with the State of Connecticut on Tuesday. Unfortunately, because, uh, they want a live meeting, and unfortunately, because of the new COVID variant, they're allowing four people to go to that meeting. Um, when I got the invitation, it was the superintendent, Mr. Jacobowicz. And then it would have been Marnie, who actually, Marnie asked Jim to sit in her place from, uh, C S G. And, uh, Tom from Newfield. I had asked more, uh, Maureen, Dr. Brummett, if I could attend the meeting. And she had asked Lou to, um, not go, so I could be there to represent the committee. Um, once that meeting is over, I will get an email out to you and let you know what the outcome of that meeting was. And again, I, I apologize. I didn't know where this was going. I thought it was a simple exercise. Um, but it appears that's more than that. Um, because again, I agree with, um, almost all of the speakers that we did look at this, and the direction that we wanted to go in. Um, was renovated as new for many different reasons, and the state also bought into that. And, but I, you know, when it was proposed. Why wouldn't you consider, you know, a four or five million dollar savings if that was in fact true? Um, I don't, as you, you can see the numbers, there, there's, there isn't a four or five million dollar savings to the town. Um, moving forward. Okay, with that. Any other business, uh, pertinent to the committee? Jeff, do you have anything for us?
Jeff.
No, I do not. Sorry, took a moment, unmute there, sorry.
Uh, no problem. I forgot that you mute all the time. So next is gonna bring us to public participation. I know that, I believe we have. There are three attendees left. See if anybody is looking to raise their hand. And speak to us.
We have one, I'll unmute them.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Jim, P?
Yep, Jim Parati, um, one seventy-five Hillcrest Avenue. Um, I had a question on the renovate to new project, um. When the, if it was a new building, does the destruction of the old building, was that factored in then the cost? Also, um, if it does go back to referendum, and it does not pass, where does that leave us? Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm gonna answer your question the best I can, Jim. If, I just want to give it. I don't see anybody else's hand going up. So I believe the question was, the demolition, is it covered in the construction cost? That's correct. If the building is actually torn down and the building is put up, the field that's down below would need to be relocated as well as parking lots. Um, and any of the exterior, uh, site improvements would have to be renovated, um, as they are now or improved. Um. And I guess that's the comments by members. Hopefully you're talked out. Anyone? Okay.
Yeah, Chris.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
One quick point, just to, uh, that caller's question, I think he brings up an interesting question. Is if there was a desire to move with a new construction project, which theoretically. Could go on a November ballot, you know, sixty, seventy-five days away. If that were to fail, could the underlying project that has already been approved proceed?
I believe the answer, well, let me. Try to, I, I, I didn't really avoid the question, because I didn't know the answer, but I'm gonna try to answer it. How I understand that. Um, I believe our grant commitment is good for two years, although. At this meeting, if we tell the state that we are looking to move down the road of a new building versus renovated. As new, I believe they will pull the grant commitment and we will lose it. I, I can't say that factually until Tuesday, but that's my assumption. So to his question, if. We lose the grant commitment, the referendum fails, where are we? We would have to go back out the referendum again, to try to make whatever the appropriate changes are, to try to get it to pass. So. Um, but there's too many questions that I can't answer yet.
Yeah, so I think that the fairest statement is, as we said, I think almost as a group, would be our best action at this point was. Thank you for the information, but, uh, continue to proceed as we have so far. All right, thanks, Steve.
Okay, Steve Sylvia?
Thank you.
Yep.
I make a motion to the board that we continue the path that we're currently on, on a renovate as new.
Okay, so there's, there's, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that. I, I don't think it's necessary, but I think you could read to it.
Okay, so now there's a motion on the floor, that's been seconded by Chris Meyer, to. Not move down the road of exploring a new building, but to stay with renovated as new. So do we want to discuss that motion?
I think we've discussed it, uh, but, um, I would like to have a discussion, uh, then, and allow. The opportunity for the rest of the members to have that discussion.
Let me, I'm gonna recognize Mike Camillo, he had his hand up prior to you making that motion. So, Mike, do you want to address that?
This is a question for Tom and Marnie. Um, sounds like you found more things that are possibly gonna raise the cost of this project, the renovate is new. Will that take us beyond our cap? And have to go back to referendum anyhow? So, fight the walls, you know.
It's possible, yes.
Okay.
I, I, I'd like to make a couple of comments too. I, I think it's undetermined at this time. I did want to, um, just point out to the committee that the, and Tom can confirm this. Um, the renovate is new estimate. That Newfield has put together and present, presented is based upon a lot of assumptions. Uh, of what the scope of work is. Um, since that estimate was put together. K B A has delivered a schematic design package to Newfield. So over the last couple of weeks, set, and this is since that estimate was put together, that you saw tonight. Um. Newfield has been hard at work. Doing that S D estimate. And that will, I think, um. More accurately portray. The cost, the renovate, uh, as new costs for this project. Um, and as you pointed out, you know, the, the hazmat information will be gathering, the roof deck information will be gathering. All of that information will go to Newfield so that they can fine tune. What they, uh, believe the cost of a renovate as a new project is, and the plan is for them to present that. To the committee on August nineteenth. So, um, I think it's, it's important that, uh, everyone understand that. Um, that. You know, more, uh, better data is coming. As far as the cost of renovate as new versus new.
Mister Chairman? I could just ask that this moves along. I do have a seven o'clock meeting that's starting right now.
Okay.
I didn't realize you guys were gonna go this late.
Yeah, I didn't, well. I didn't know for sure.
One more thing.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, um, since we don't have all the information. We should wait until we do, so I'm asking Steve to table this until we have all the information to make a good decision here.
Yeah. There's, there's a motion on the floor and a second, so I can't table it unless the maker of the motion wants to do that.
And I'm, uh, Mike, I'm very comfortable tabling it, because as far as I'm concerned, we're still continuing down the renovator's new path. But I haven't changed the path.
And we are, so. And we're not looking.
Yeah, so what, the reason why, Michael, the reason why I made the motion was, is that I didn't want us walking in on Tuesday and saying, oh, we want a new building. And all of a sudden, the grants pulled on us. No, I, basically, if we stay the course. Uh, until we have the additional information, I have no problem. Um, I make a motion to table this conversation until additional data is available. Second that.
Okay, so the motion has been pulled off the table. Um, and just so everybody knows, at that meeting, nothing is going to be decided one way or the other. It's really fact finding. Those facts will then come back to the committee, the committee as a whole will make a recommendation. And if we're gonna continue down this path, then I think it just, we just keep moving. And if not, we would make a recommendation to go back to the council, um, and tell them that we want to march down the road of a new building. But we're just trying to make sure we have answers to everybody's questions, which we still don't.
Right, and I appreciate that, Steve. I know how tough this one is, but, um. And I do thank you for taking the, bringing this before us, and. I wasn't aware that this was on Facebook.
I wasn't either on, until five minutes before the meeting. Again, it, it was a very small group, and we were asked to keep it that way. I tend to do what I'm asked, so. Um, and I apologize, and I, and I told people I would take the eat, and I will. Uh, I know that it might not have been the right thing. If I was a committee member, I probably would be upset, but. Um. Again, I, I, I'm not the bandleader. I'm just marching in it right now.
Right.
Oh, okay, um, anybody else? I don't see anyone else's hand up. I finally figured this out, James. Uh, I know I'm keeping it for an extra second, but I do like now that the hands go up in order, so I can.
Yeah.
Do is keep that up on my screen.
Very convenient.
Yes, all right, so motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
Second.
Yep, all in favor?
Hi.
Anyone to post? Motion passage, yes, thank you, everybody.
May. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.